Welcome everyone, it is now four P M. Welcome everyone to. Our Yelm Planning Commission meeting, I call it to order. Staff, would you please hold a roll call for us?
Yeah, Commissioner Carlos Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Ward.
Here.
Commissioner John Graver, um, he may be here on Zoom um or in person, not sure quite yet. Um, Commissioner Richard Lumsdale.
Here.
Um, Commissioner Ann Warman is excused, Commissioner Jerry Fugick um should be here, he's running a little bit late. And Commissioner John Thompson.
Here.
All right, let's proceed on to please stand for the pleasurable reasons.
Pleasurable reasons.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minute from last week? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Consecutive, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the minutes have been approved. Item, item number five, city staff communications. Any city staff communications?
Just one thing tonight, and that's uh you received an email from me, I don't know about a week ago. Uh, the consultant who's going to be helping us with our comp plan update. He's going to be here through uh no, through the twenty seventh through November thirtieth, a four day, I call it a blitzkrieg. Because they're going to come and they're going to meet with the city council, hopefully the planning commission, uh, hopefully you guys can make it. Uh, do tour of the city, uh, do a lot of photographing the city and just sort of documenting it, trying to get basic information. Uh, be meeting with the public services committee, meeting with the Nisqually tribe. And we also have a special um business um community meeting, so. Uh, we've reached out to both large and small developers and the Chamber of Commerce and have asked them to forward it to other businesses that might be interested. So we're just trying to, you know, introduce the project, they're going to show some of the tools that we're going to be using. And obviously, uh, you're basically, the planning commission is what we're considering to be the steering committee for the development of the comp plan. You're going to have over time the most involvement with it because ultimately you're the ones who have to recommend approval of the comp plan. So um, they will talk a little bit about just what their strategy is going to be going forward. The comp plan has to be done June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. So that doesn't, uh, that seems like, right now, it seems like it's far away, it's not. Uh, because there's a lot of work to be done. So again, I just, um, I'm sorry, I couldn't have given more notice uh about the um, meeting with the. The consultant, but it's just, it's what they proposed to us on their schedule, so we got the invite out to you as soon as we could.
Have you gotten a lot of response from the community?
Uh, well, we haven't done any general public outreach, that'll be kind of the next step. Uh, have, I've only heard a couple replies from the business community. I'll follow up, I guess, again with the chamber to see uh what they've heard. Um, the tribe is really interested in it. And we decided we would meet with them at the um tribal headquarters uh to introduce a consultant to the tribe that way. Um, so that's that.
That was uh six twenty-five twenty-five or six twenty-five twenty-four due the.
Oh, June thirty twenty twenty-five, yes.
All right, uh, any further communications from staff? Uh, we're now going to open it up to public comments, uh, anyone, uh. In the audience that would like to address the commission?
Right.
Um, we have a guest here, uh, Tim first with First Finishers.
Yes.
Um, who I'd like to uh contribute and help me present um the PowerPoint on the central business district. So I don't know if that's a public comment now, or if you'd like to uh receive that during the presentation where it would.
Well, just right to the presentation. Okay. Uh, agenda item number seven, is there any unfinished business that needs to be addressed from the last meeting? None?
Oh, none.
Very well. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, new business, central business district development challenges.
All right, uh, good afternoon, uh, planning mission. Uh, I'm Andrew Fuller, the assistant planner, uh, this is cool, it's my first opportunity to present in front of y'all. Uh, and I hope I can do it uh more often, so the first of hopefully many. So the great.
It's not working.
Okay, and only, only from here.
Go for it.
Give me just one second, it'll make a lot more sense with uh with some context.
If you have a screen thing or.
Technical difficulties, no, the slides don't want to change once it's. No, just give me one sec.
Okay.
Just in case, send a little time to review the. We built it, we have, we really built it in. Is that what you can?
Yeah.
Go through it that way. It's a. So. Uh huh. It'll work, um, so the central business district, the, the real purpose of that is uh to promote special characteristics of an existing downtown area. Um, there's, um, you need to provide uh pedestrian shopping atmosphere and um promote the. The rehabilitation of existing structures, and you see that a lot, um, you know, I. Prem auto repair is not in that, um, but you know, seeing an existing structure in. Um, you know, we have a lot of permitted uses, we have retail establishments, um, service oriented establishments. Um, mixed use developments, so I'll show you an example of what that looks like, but usually it's about twenty percent commercial, eighty percent residential. So you have a little store of some kind or a restaurant and then apartments above it. Um, as always, public safety and emergency response uh facilities like fire and police, um, emergency medical centers and hospitals. Um, and then uh. Attached co-located wireless communication facilities. And then special uses which are, you know, you'll see them on a lot of zones, um, the childcare, nurseries, preschools, um, et cetera, uh churches. Um. And here's our map of the CBD um in its current form. So as you can see, there are, um, you know, it's a, it's a very wide area. Um, and it's a, and a lot of those lots are pretty far from Yelm Avenue. Um, which in turn creates some challenges um for. Um, for development, so kind of going into the mixed use developments, um, you know, it's, it's generally that eighty twenty. Um, and with our um mixed use, which is allowed in the CBD, which is the currently the only form of um. Residential allowed in that zone is uh a minimum average density of sixteen units per acre, um, and a maximum of thirty-two. So it's a, it's this balance of, you know, creating commercial and having the parking available for. One, the businesses, uh, the employees and the residents there. So going into those development challenges, um, our current CBD includes a lot of uh existing residential areas. Uh, without really the infrastructure to support business, um, as you can see. On those two pictures, um, that, so I can't remember what address that is, but um. That's in the CBD along with the Royal McKenzie, um, where the uh Google street view is. Um, so with the CBD, again, there's usually sidewalks and things, um, in our current CBD, we have a lot of area that doesn't have that infrastructure. Um, so I want to point out the lot size, it's kind of hard to, to gauge, but um, the one on the top right is about point two acres. Um, and that's what we're seeing with a lot of the CBD lots, they're all usually between uh about. Point one five and point two five acres, um, which. End up being a little bit restrictive to mixed use developments, um, regarding those density and uh parking requirements. Um, and then, um, yeah, just having the lots outside of the five oh seven, five ten um corridor. So I just want to reemphasize that this um. Presentation, we're not looking for a decision or any, um, you know, anything like that today. We're just mo- mostly wanting to start a conversation about, um, you know, the, the challenges and maybe amending it. Or re, you know, revisiting the zone of the CBD, um, but we're not looking for any decisions, just kind of getting our, um, our minds turning on it. Um, Tim, would you like to kind of speak on behalf of development? Because it was this project that kind of um.
Maybe I'm here or I could just sit here or whatever.
They'll hear you wherever, wherever you're most comfortable.
Well, so, yeah, I'm Tim first, nice, nice to meet all of you. Um, so we came here, I think it was about a year ago, just to discuss the challenges that we had. We have a property on Washington uh Avenue and we should right there. And basically, we just build apartments right here, we have duplex here, duplex here, duplex here, duplex there. We literally no infrastructure at all, I do not have anything in those duplex here. And what we were told was that all we need to do is, you know, eighty twenty. And the concern for that is that we wouldn't have enough on-site parking, and even if we used on-street parking, we couldn't even make that work. So basically, we're, you know, stuck with not having the ability to do anything with. With that lot to where we essentially killed a potential project, which is revenue to the city and, and also a project for us with the land that we bought in town. And um, as a company and as, as you know, uh, people that have lived here for a long time. We have been investing in T L, we have been buying properties, you know, we have been developing in T L. But after that happened, we started to start to look outside of Yelm, because if we're going to encounter challenges like that, where we're not able to make projects work. Because of the way that the zoning was set up, then it forced us kind of to start looking in other places. And, and when we met with Drew and with Gary, uh, we'd mentioned it again about a month ago or so that. You know, we were still interested and we still want to continue with our projects here in town. But knowing how zoning changes that essentially make it to where we can't make it work. You know, unless we go, you know, underground parking, three stories up for, you know, basically a three unit with a uh twenty percent of. Space for either hair salon or for, you know, office space on, you know, basically the third row back from Main Street. When you have availability throughout town for office space, which have much better visibility. It just didn't seem to make sense for us to even try to make a project work because of, it's not going to pencil out. At the end of the day, we still need to, to make money in order to pay for the, the costs that we put into it. And I think, you know, we, we were told, oh, you could do a convenience store or something like that, and it. Just on, on that street, as you picture, very similar to what he just showed. It just doesn't make any sense in that particular area for us to be doing that, and most of the buildings that are all around are. You know, we've built newer uh buildings and they're not going to be going anywhere anytime soon, there's not going to be anyone just. Take in that whole block and then, you know, high-rise, you know, sixty story, you know, sorry, sixty foot, you know, building there. With underground parking, it just doesn't pencil out in, in town here to be going underground with, with parking, uh, at least not. Not when we've run the numbers at all, so, um. You know, we appreciate the fact that, you know, you guys are willing to look at it. And I know this is not just this project here, I know there's multiple other areas in town where, you know, on-site, on-street parking doesn't work. Uh, and I know we could do remodel parking, but then again, I'm not sure who'd want to live. You know, somewhere and then have to park their car two or three hundred feet away, because I think it's within three hundred feet, they'd have to park and then they could walk to their home. It just, things like that just didn't really seem to make a whole lot of sense, and so that we've basically shelved that project for the time being because of that, and. Um. And I think that there's different areas that should be looked at for the CBD zoning and maybe a CBD one, CBD two. One where, you know, we, we don't have the same requirements. As, you know, if you're right on the main street, you know, we're open to it and we're open to change in the city, we just want the change to make sense. You know, for, for us and for anyone else, because otherwise it just pushes us as developers out of this town and to look into other places that are easier to work with. And then we sit on the land and do nothing with it, so, because then no one's going to want to buy the land, they're going to run into the same problem. So essentially, that's, that's kind of what concerns that we have about that.
So what did you intend, what would you like to put on that?
Well, we, we have two duplexes on the side of it, we just wanted to put another duplex there because we already have two.
You're restricted from doing that because of the current zone.
Correct, the current zoning would have us do three units that would be living units based on the sixteen units per acre. And we would have to have twenty percent of that be office space, we'd have four units on that point sixteen acre lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would just, uh, for us to make that work wouldn't, it would be really kind of a. Uh, just wouldn't make a whole lot of sense the way that it's currently set up, and we just wanted to kind of add a continuation and, and make it all. Look nice and just have another duplex, because that's what made sense.
Drew, apart from being aware of, of the, that problem and that issue, what? What else needs to go forward before decisions are made about the rezoning uh of the properties?
Yeah, so it, there's multiple ways to skin this cat, um, there's, you know, a potential for uh minimum lot sizes. And if it doesn't meet a minimum lot size, then it would be essentially classified as something else, um. I'm still looking, I'm really looking into and researching how to do this, um, it's kind of a new thing, um, and. You know, potentially an overlay or some kind of a, you know, a variance or able to, you know, vary from the CBD. Um, so we were looking at minimum lot areas of um point two acres. So if you have a, a lot that's half an acre in the CBD, we want you to build something kind of big on it, um. But if you have a, a lot that is yours like point one six.
One six.
Um, so having those, those very small lots, you know, having that be able, having the ability to either build a duplex or a single family. Um, or multifamily. But we, again, we don't want it on Yelm Avenue, we don't want duplexes popping up right on the main street, um. Because, you know, we want that to be a place for commerce, so, you know, we're looking at kind of highlighting it in blue. Um, to keep, you know, the, the business district, the business district, but also, and then, you know, have more, um. You know, higher residential or medium residential, um.
My vision is a little off, that's one block off of Yelm.
Uh, yeah, I can, I can hop up here, so. This. This is, let's see, one, two blocks, so, um, you know, within two blocks of State Route five oh seven, um. And then, or five ten, and you know, there's potential you expanding it down, um, the five oh seven corridor. Um, then there's the, also the, um, you know, ability to create just how we do in the central, um, not central business district. Commercial districts, um, we have, you know, C one, C two and C three, uh, we could look at re, you know, creating a, a very similar zone to the current CBD. But labeling it CBD one or um CBD two. Um, that would, you know, maybe we look at the um housing or the, um. The density requirements, um, parking requirements. And there's a, there's a lot of ways we could look at this, um, or, you know, another option, and I don't know how feasible any of this is yet. But uh, we could also just take a look at, you know, uh. The boundary, the zoning boundary for a um CBD, maybe we adjust that and maybe the CBD is really this. Strip and maybe it extends, um, but there's, there's multiple ways to do that. Um, I don't know the, the best solution, I'm pretty new at it, um, but it's more of kind of the direction we want to go. If we want to, you know, possibly create a new district or revise that um CBD boundary.
Then I would assume, there's not a lot of vacant spaces, so you're kind of looking like, if you look at where America's credit union is right now, you had houses on both sides. And those houses were acquired, tore down, so you would probably have a similar concept that there's a lot of older buildings within this area. That you'd hope you'd be able to acquire those pieces of property, which then by combining two or three of those, that would give you also a bigger. Footprint to build something on.
Which would make sense on, if you're right off a main street because of the location, but being three streets back.
It's, it's pretty hard.
That's allowed, and even having point five acres, you still run on into the, the on-site parking, on-street parking issue. Unless you start to go vertical, which I know is, I wish for the cities to start going into vertical and, you know, beat the hell below. But the only place I see that making sense is, you know, on Main Street, you know, doing a sixty-foot building. Two streets back with all that just wouldn't really make a whole lot of sense. Um, but what you're, to your point, yes, buying other homes and then tearing them down and then putting something. Of substance on Main Street and doing, you know, basically the eighty twenty, that makes full sense, just not behind or off the, the beaten path. So.
Yeah, and there, you also have the issue of availability, whether these properties available or maybe you could.
Well, and it becomes very expensive, if you have to buy, you know, a home, the one right next to Lajitana, we looked at that one at the time, we were looking at basically buying and making a development there. And they want four hundred thousand dollars for, you know, fifteen hundred square foot, you know, little house that's dilapidated. And if you take that and you take, you have to buy a bunch of those, then by the time you're done, you're two, three million dollars in the hole just to try to get.
Yeah.
You know, a little bit of acres to, to make it work, so it becomes challenging to like, how, how is this even going to work? You know?
Done, all right, now.
Well, how long a process do you think this would take to a development to give a presentation to us on what you might want to do?
I think we could, um, we could come up with a couple, we could go and dive deep into a couple of the, well, there's only two things listed right now, but really there's a third. And that's, you know, looking at, I don't want to use the term rezoning, but that's kind of what it would be. Um, to maybe shrink that CBD down a little bit, um, there's an option to, you know, look at a CBD two. Um. And I could probably put the, together something or the next, is there a planning commission meeting next month?
Uh, eighteenth of, eighteenth of December.
Yeah, I, I could know that, uh, but yeah, I, I think I could get something, um, together for that meeting where we could make a. Have some kind of a recommendation for council, um, if, if this is something that you want to prioritize, um, and. Make changes to, uh.
If I can add to, I know I'm not the only one that has properties in the CBD zoning that's running into the same issue. That's not in, right off the main corridor, that, that's also basically just. Then the water waiting for something to either change or there's a land sitting there. And I think just from a, looking at it from a two-way street, you know, from a developer's side versus a city size, it's revenue that the city's not getting by. Developing that land and it just sitting there, so I know that there's more than just me that's running to that issue. You know, because as contractors and developers, we talk to others, and I know that that's also a concern for others as well.
And I'm sure that anything that you might come up with, Drew, will have an impact on the comprehensive plan or, or.
It's all tied together. It's all tied together, and I don't, um, we haven't really talked about the timing for the next steps, so I don't want to commit to like.
Yeah, I was.
Month or anything.
I was going to say.
Because I, I think we want to really.
Make sure to do it. Just now.
Look at the neighborhoods, you know, um, and it might be something where we, maybe we do have a corridor, I mean, I, I know we're going to have a corridor as far as Yelm Highway is concerned. But how deeply we go uh off of Yelm Highway, it may be that we have just certain patches where it's like, it's not likely to ever convert. But we also don't want to foreclose on the possibility that there may be some scattered parcels in the broader CBD that could develop down the road. So we don't want to foreclose on that, and I think Drew's options capture, you know, the ability to do, um, flexibility to, to do that. But we just want to make sure we've got our boundaries firmly set in our own. Mind for a recommendation.
All right, we have another question, yeah?
Prior to this youthful coming on staff here for Yelm, we had spent some time looking at different. Traffic revisions throughout this downtown core. So with all of that time that was spent, we had representation from DOT, et cetera, they gave presentations. And so a lot of discussion was about creating one-way traffic through the alley, these back roads, uh. I'm wondering if that shouldn't be a consideration to tie in with what you want to do here now, how, how the traffic's going to impact all of that?
Yeah. You know, I was, Cody, we're sitting here, uh, because he's much more familiar than what they call it, the one-way couplets, but they are, that, those things are still going forward. We've got, um, at least two or three roundabouts that are supposedly going to be happening pretty soon. Um, it's got funding from W S C O T to do, and, um, I. We're going to look at how that impacts it, but the, my understanding of the one-way couplets issue is that it's going to improve just sort of the traffic flow downtown. So it should benefit, not um hinder, you know, whatever we do with the zoning district.
That, that was just wanted to throw that out.
So it's still, a lot of time was spent on that and. Right, I get it, a lot of times you plan and plan and plan and then everybody forgets about it, but it's still, it's still on the. List, let's put it that way.
Yeah, that, that was, that was actually going to be my question, because I know you, you mentioned something about Yelm Highway, I'm not sure what you were referring to, but. But we're talking about doing the CBDs and, and, you know, potentially, you know, doing some other building on. In the areas, but one of the big problems is, everybody knows, is the traffic going through town. So if, how, if we start building. And, you know, also trying to take the, you know, traffic and future traffic into consideration, you know, when there's accident, things like, you know, just totally bottlenecks everything. So, I mean, I would be curious.
Well.
How everything.
I would think though that if we reduce the central business district. Boundaries, that would have some kind of a positive effect on the traffic flow, because you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have businesses. Scattered everywhere to attract traffic coming, you know, to those different places and even make it more. coming, you know, to those different places and even make it more contested, and what it is, is it, so that if we uh, kind of limit the central business district, we hopefully will at least be able to channel the traffic a little better, because we have a more definitive business district and it's not as spread out as what we have.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I think the, the stuff we're discussing tonight, um, and revisions uh, would have minimal impact as far as, uh, you know, ba- from the baseline, if you want to call it that. It might actually result in more traffic, because a property that can't develop will never have traffic. A property that can will have a couple of cars a day, but it's nothing, so.
Residential is better than business, I think.
Yes, yes, so, I mean, I think, and it was before my time, and I'm sure you guys were involved in the conversation, but there was a lot of opposition of the idea of duplexes in the commercial business district, but I think it was primarily just because of Yell Avenue, and so maybe that prohibition extended farther than it needed, and that's really what the Drew so excellently presented to you, so.
Anything else, any other questions, Drew, anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Very well, thank you, uh, next item on, uh, adjusted, is short-term rentals.
So. Uh, I, so with short-term rentals, there's a quite a few, um, here's a people of the table there, that, that's just one of many, um, proposed or potential code updates, um, the short-term rentals one was basically listed in, um, it should have, it shouldn't just be that, it should say, you know, proposed code updates. Um, but that's one of them, because we don't have a code on the books right now for things like Airbnb. Um, so we're looking at how to create or have Airbnb contribute to funds such as uh, the LTAC lodging tax, um. The acronym is, um, basically for the lodging tax and how we can tap into that. Um, if you scroll down to the bottom, we had a couple of them, and we're just trying to, um, maybe get your input, um, a little bit of guidance on what the planning commission would like to see, um, in terms of priorities, is that something I'd appreciate?
Well, that isn't exactly what I wanted to present on this, be honest with you, um. I just wanted to show you the stuff that we have been compiling, that we haven't necessarily prioritized yet. And some of it, if you could scroll up to the. So, this is just to keep going there, Drew. This is just to kind of show you all, all the things that we have identified, and it's not all the things, because a lot of times we'll be having meetings and going, oh, that's not in our but we might, you know, we try our best to put, put in our code changes table the things that we need to work on. And we're trying to document when we also have worked on them, so if you see on the very top one there, on the right-hand side, you'll see that we actually adopted those cor- code changes, and you may or may not remember it, um. But we, we amended our C one, C two, C three districts and uh, adopted that through ordinance ten ninety-five, but enough you could screw, uh, go, go down a little bit. We have all of these other things that are really kind of big, big-ticket items, and we're kind of still wondering the best way to, um, bring them to the planning commission, because in addition to the things that we want to do that are identified here, part of what the consultant is going to be doing, who we're going to be meeting with at the end of the month, is updating our unified unified development code, so some of these things will be the things that they will take on, but while they're taking it on, it, I mean, we just sit around and, and wait. There are things that we can also take on and kind of work simultaneously with them. But things that have come up, for example, the, if you could see developed standards for drive-through businesses. So we don't have any what they call stacking standards, and by that, I mean like the Pico's Pit, which Chris has been working on. Um, part of reviewing that, we uh, had no standards for how far they needed to provide space for cars to stack up in line, so when you go to McDonald's or you go to, you know, wherever, you, you need to have typically, the space will require they have enough room for like eight cars to stack without getting in the way of anyone else. Uh, we didn't have that, we had to get in a big discussion about it, because that's a shared parking lot down there, so it's stuff like that, that just comes up all the time.
Right.
Um, you'll see the permanent supportive housing is another one that you guys adopted. Uh, Chris, I don't know, you may know the, the two to nine units thing.
Yeah, so with that, we were looking at ministerial reviews.
Sorry, I can see my.
Which, when this group review requires improvements such as front page sign walks, parking on-street and off-street. So that's under consideration as to whether or not we want a ministerial review for a duplex or a branch, sorry, tri-plex.
Yeah, so if you could scroll down a little bit more. Um, annexate, well, just a, just a little bit, sorry, future updates, so like the city's annexation code is really rough, it's a real challenge to work with, and when we did the last round of annexations, it just occurred to all of us, I think, that we really need to overhaul that, that in itself is one big project, because it's basically going to be changing the entire code that we have for annexations. Um, I'm just kind of letting you know, we've got plenty of work to do, we don't have any rules for marijuana establishments, um.
Do we have a, can we have a copy of this list?
Of course, yeah, oh, do you have it? No, we've, we've been maintaining it internally just as, but um, certainly we can, um, provide you a copy.
Uh, I'd like.
Can I ask too, the thing that, if you, if you know of things that aren't on the list that you think we should be working on around town, we'd like to know, of course.
I, I have one right off the bat, that, that little, uh, halt, not, what is it, the childcare center right there on Yell? The, the shopping center, the, the backs up traffic right there, right across the street from, from five oh seven tavern.
Okay, at the Yell entry?
Yeah, that, uh, I, I was taking left going to Goodwill, but there was cars backed up and the cars going this way and this way, but that's out, you know, or you stand west.
Is it because of pickup and drop-off?
Yeah, yeah, pickup and drop-off.
And that used to be a, just a very small building, I think they did for a travel agency, and then they converted that into a kind of a childcare, was never designed either entrance or exit to have fifteen people picking up their children.
That's the one over by the Realtor and, uh, by where Mariachi used to be, it's the church now.
No, no, no.
I mean, there, there's that, there's that little, it's just.
Right there, tea between, what is that street? The, the tea's right there, five oh seven, five oh seven tavern and the, uh, uh, shell station, I think it is right there.
Between there, right, that's kind of right across the street.
Yeah, right across the street, yeah.
Right across from.
That's what they're often about, about not having standards for stacking.
Yeah.
So the difficulties and deficiencies in our code, we don't find them until we try to use that code, and we realize it's working against us in our governance.
Yeah.
So these are all excellent opportunities to address those deficiencies, dude. Okay.
So, so, uh. So Drew, then you were talking about, I'd say the last three or four are the ones that have come up that you specifically have been asked to talk about, can you?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, well, there's the, let's see. Where I want to start, chance. But, um, there's no, uh, there's nothing in our code about, um, any motion picture theaters, uh, performing arts centers, um, so when we look at a code and we say, you know, they're in a, um, we'll just keep using CBD. If they're in a CBD, unless it lists it specifically, it's not allowed use. Um, so with that, if someone tried to put a theater in the CBD currently, um, would not our code wouldn't allow it, um, so, which is really interesting, and I don't understand how, um, you know, the the previous theater SRO, um, you know, or even Yell Cinema, um, because if it's as our code is today, um, a lot of those things wouldn't be permitted uses. Uh, so it's just something that we should, uh, look at and figure out where, where we would want those to be accepted. Um, the short-term rental LTAC, uh, we're tapping into that right now, uh, the hearing examiner fee. So we found out that it's, it's really quite low, um, so if uh, Gary, you might have to help me on this one, um, so if there's an appeal or something, um, it's, I, I think a twelve hundred dollar fee. Uh, and if, if they win the appeal, then they don't have to pay the hearing examiner, but if they lose, um, they have to pay it, but it's only twelve hundred dollars, so it, a lot of the time, it'll still cost the city money. Um, because they, the hearing examiner charges more than, than they're charging the, um, either applicant or the appeal, per- the person initiated the appeal, um. Then minimum lot size for CBD, um, that's kind of included all in the, you know, multiple options on how to um, you know, make it make sense to develop, um, because again, we want to plan for things that again, make sense for all involved, um, and then, let's see, oh, minimum requirement for a traffic impact. Uh, and I'll, I should, it should say traffic impact analysis, or even a TGND, um. So the traffic generation and distribution letter kind of initiates a traffic impact analysis. Uh, but right now, it's, um, I think it's twenty-four, twenty-five peak hour trips. Initiate a trafficked, um, generation and distribution letter, um, but there's no real requirement from, um, from our code or any, anything that we have that would impact or initiate a traffic impact analysis, um. So it's something to look at, we're kind of, you know, learning on the fly with that, uh.
How is initiated, how do you initiate a, a traffic impact analysis?
So with twenty-four, twenty-five peak hour trips, it's in a, it's really only in our application. Um, it doesn't really show it in our, uh, Yell Municipal Code, that, um. But it is in our application that if it's twenty-five or more, I think, peak hour trips, it initiates a, you, the applicant would have to submit a traffic distribution generation or generation distribution letter, um. Within that TGND, it, they oftentimes just say, you know, um, this is a tool for the city if they would like to, you know, request a traffic impact analysis, um, but there's really no guideline for us to, uh, go off of with that.
So we use a consultant, um, you know, the one thing is, right now, we have nothing in our code, it just says on the application if you're going to generate more than twenty trips, and that's usually done by looking at a traffic manual, that says this kind of business writes this number, this number, when we have them do that ju- distribution, what they do is they model it and they they model where the trips, how many trips are, there are, and where they're going to go, and then we send that to our consultant, because we don't have a traffic engineer. They analyze it to see whether those trips are going to intersections that may or may not already be failing, that kind of a thing. If it does look like that, then they will look for a traffic impact analysis. And based on the traffic impact analysis, we can require the developer to, you know, it's called a concurrency requirement to do improvements off-site if they're actually going to be impacting, let's say, a stoplight at Long Meyer or something like that. So it's a kind of a staged process. And that's a, that's a big one for us, obviously, traffic, because we hear that every time we do anything. And so it's important for us to have a good process.
Any other questions, any other comments from staff regarding this?
Just that on the hearing examiner thing, um, we've had a couple, um, subdivisions lately that they have to go to the hearing examiner for approval, and as, uh, Drew said, we charge twelve hundred bucks for that, but the hearing examiner fee, I think it's been coming at twenty-six hundred. Around there, we're charging less than half of what it costs the city to do that, so we need to we have that, actually with a lot of applications, but this, we'll pick them one at a time, so.
So, uh, are you telling us that many of these things require our input, our our decision as to whether or not.
Every single thing on there, um, we have to go through you guys, so these are all considered legislative decisions.
Yes.
They need your recommendation of approval, um, anything that you do recommend, then we would take to the council for adoption, but the hearing would occur here. Well, I mean, ideally, and it gets really, even with the changes we did last time, you know, you want to do as many as you can in one batch, because it's a lot of work to have the hearings and all that, but having a hearing where you're making changes to things that are so different from one another is challenging too.
Yes.
So.
All right, well, I think you have a plan to start submitting that list.
Well, um. I don't really have a plan yet, to be honest with you, you know? I think we need to all talk, and again, figure out what the real priorities are, what are the things that are coming up the most? And what are the areas that are causing us some of those problems, and then, um, also, you know, what, what are your priorities too, I mean, that has to be part of it.
So what are?
We'll probably present a proposal to you, the things we, I think you usually annually do a work plan of some kind.
Yeah.
So we'll probably do something along those lines, where we try to put together a work plan of things that we can tackle over the next six months or year.
Is that in the very near future or coming up here?
It's gonna have to be, yeah, I mean, getting the consult going is kind of kicking it off the discussion in general, so.
Right. Uh, the reason I ask is that we got the holidays coming up and.
Oh, yeah.
There'll be a lot of people, I, I know.
Count on anything happening.
December. Into January a little bit, so, but.
I mean, probably, one of the issues we have, and you, you've seen this three or four times already this year, just like this issue, um, things just come up.
Yeah.
So the best made plans often get whittled by other things that come up, and.
One at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would kind of agree with Carlos, is just maybe send this list out to the, you know, commission and, and so we can kind of go through it and, and, you know, start kind of prioritizing in our mind, or if there's, you know, we could see what you're looking at, and then, you know, if we can kind of come to a consensus as far as, you know, priority, what we feel, then, I mean, it might be a starting point.
Okay, that would be helpful, for sure.
Keeping in mind what's best for the city, that's what our whole goal is here.
Yes.
What's best for the city, all right, then, any other? Number eight.
And that's all.
Very well, thank you very much, those are.
Great.
Uh, no public meetings, I take it, whatsoever, subcommittee reports, no one here, Chris, what do you?
Uh, tree board, we got together last month, we picked out a theme for the Arbor Day celebration. Um, we're gonna get that theme up at the school as soon as possible. I'm sure you're all familiar with that Arbor Day art contest, we blow up the first, second, third place uh, for things, very large, that's a lot of work, so I asked for at least six weeks to get all of that done. To count for the printer failures, all, all of the fun things that come up with technology and status, um. See what else did we work on? Working on picking out a species to give out to per- attendees. I'm thinking maybe going with seeds instead of saplings would be a better idea, that might cheaper to care for, might contain more mobile. Um, and a tree exchange that maybe was nice, yeah, we could pick me out a tree for that, and then, um, then Roy, she's our, uh, preparation coordinator and, and student, uh, brigade coordinator for the city Yell. She'll be taking over as the host of the operation, she's gonna have a lot more involved in the tree. So we'll have her at our December meeting, and we'll get close to the finalizing what the celebration will look like. I'm working on getting our Tree City USA status updated, so I believe that'll make us Tree City for twenty-nine years now.
Hmm.
So there's a lot of work that goes with that, we have to have something of a comprehensive plan as far as our urban forestry maintenance goes. How much we're spending on education, maintenance, um, the RBA operation, operation has to go out, so there's a lot of moving parts with that, we're trying to choreograph all of that, so it all lands in the timeframe, it's a part of the planning.
Uh, I believe that's it, all right then. Do I hear a motion for adjournment? Uh, I believe that's it, all right then, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I don't think it'll be adjourned, second.
All the favors, aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So one other thing that's kind of, we're working with the district commission, because we are coming up on the centennial at Yell.